Reconvene the meeting at 3:08 PM. Believe that Tom has already turned it over to our next group. I'll allow you guys to kick it off.
Thank you. So first of all, thank you for this opportunity, potential opportunity, to be a partner with Waco, transforming downtown Waco. We are so excited to be here. I'm Scott Krikorian with Trammell Crow Company. I have Jeff DeBryan with Trammell Crow, Joel Behrens, Kevin Brooks, Geo Lincoln, sorry, Hattie Hutton, and I have David Skaggs with HKS here with us. Is there a, where's the?
We can do it.
Perfect. Go to the next one. So this next picture just really kind of shows that we would have a contractual obligation with Waco to be their developer. Really, we're going to talk a lot right now about planning, and then we will go execute Waco's vision. We will then enter into, we'll go get, excuse me, we'll go get the selected partners that are strategic partners like HKS and OJB. HKS obviously has expertise in sporting and entertainment, and OJB is a world-class landscape designer. Just real quick about Trammell Crow Company, a little commercial here. We started in Dallas 75 years ago, 1948. We still have our headquarters here. We are the largest developer in the country, but we operate locally, so we have 20 different offices. So we think that in order to develop, you really need to have a local presence. We are owned by CBRE, who is the largest real estate company in the world, and really what they provide us not only is financial support, but they really provide us an incredible network that's internal and external, and we have expertise in all product types. So we do multifamily, industrial, office, retail, life science, medical, all product types we do under one umbrella. We also are very institutional. So for instance, our financial partners on principal deals are MetLife, Principal, Prudential, that type of ownership. And really, what we're really proud of also is that in 2021, we delivered 2.6 million square feet with Amazon, with you guys. We were arm-in-arm. It was a great relationship, and it really kind of gave us a great vision of how Waco is a can-do city. So with that, I'm going to pass it off to my team. First, Kevin.
Hey, guys. Thank you for having us. I'm Kevin Brooke. I've been with Trammell Crow for seven years, six of those spent in Austin, just down the street, and now coming up on a year here in Dallas, or north of us here in Dallas. So kind of bookended Waco, and I'm excited to be here today. I did want to touch briefly on why we selected HKS beyond a wide-ranging partnership across all product types really in Dallas, down in Austin, and across the nation. Their specialty kind of capabilities in the sports and entertainment, we think, is just a tremendous fit for the opportunity here in downtown Waco. You could see some of the most recognizable stadiums that they have designed, but they have also done a ton of minor league baseball in mixed-use district, and I think David would talk about how rewarding that has been to see kind of the revitalization and transformation of the surrounding districts that those stadiums have brought. OJB, as you guys have probably seen from many of the respondents today that have chosen to partner with OJB, they're a tremendous group. We have another longstanding relationship with them in Dallas across product types from high-rise to low-rise to master-planned mixed-use communities. But really, what made us partner with them on this pursuit was their direct experience in this neighborhood. You know, Waco has this amazing asset with the river. Unfortunately, in Dallas, we don't have that, but would love to leverage their expertise and experience already working in Waco and in this district to kind of carry it forward and tie it all into what we're hoping to do. We were asked to highlight some unique capabilities or some perhaps underemphasized characteristics of our team in the RFQ. I really want to touch on three today. The first being, we are a one-stop-shop. The folks at this table and at our office behind us have developed all product types from hotels to retail centers to for-rent apartments, for-sale condos, public works projects, civic buildings, and a mixture of all in between. And we've really done that across the entire spectrum of deal structures. So from fee-only developments, often on behalf of public institutions like yourselves, where we're acting almost as an owner's rep to bring someone else's vision to life, to entirely privately capitalized developments where we are raising all the capital and significantly invested in those deals as well, to somewhere in the middle in the form of a public-private partnership where we're raising private capital to invest on top of public dollars. So I think what being a one-stop-shop provides for you guys as a city of Waco is a single point of contact. There is nothing that's going to fall through the cracks between a misaligned partnership or miscommunication, and so it's a unique capability of us at Trammell Crow Company. The second is really CBRE, our parent company. While we act with the nimbleness of a very local developer, we have the resources of the largest real estate firm in the world behind us. And not only is that their very important balance sheet and liquidity, but it's, like Scott said, their resources in terms of the network and infrastructure of leasing brokers, investment sales brokers, research experts, and property management services. So if there was ever a specialty or, you know, an expert that we needed beyond the team that's sitting here today or in our office back in Dallas, it's still an in-house call, and we're really happy with the support we have from CBRE, but we do pride ourselves on acting like an entrepreneurial local developer. Lastly, I wanted to touch on our in-house development managers, which I believe is a huge differentiator for us. So the structure of Trammell Crow, really, we have what we kind of call deal sourcers. Many of us up here today fall into that category. Those are in charge of pursuing new opportunities, shaping those opportunities into financeable projects, and really providing executive leadership from kind of ideation to substantial completion of that project and stabilization, you know, having it fully leased. In partnership with our deal sourcers, we have in-house development managers. They are really managing the nitty-gritty details on the day-to-day basis of the project, managing, you know, the constructibility of design, all of our consultants and subconsultants, managing the general contractor. And like I said, I think we have the absolute best in the business, led by Jeff DeBryan here on our team, who will speak in a second. And with them in our office, sitting next to us every day, and working side-by-side from the project, soup to nuts, I think that's been key in allowing us to have the resume we do, which we like to brag about, all of our on-time and on-budget completions that I hope beat those stats. I know they beat the stats that we saw earlier. So with that, I will pass it off to Jeff to talk about how we round out our team beyond just Trammell Crow, HKS, and OJB.
Hello. Thank you for having us here. Yes, as Kevin mentioned, I do think we outperformed the statistics because I wouldn't be here today if we didn't. But one of the questions asked of us was to please expand on the strategies to address any missing pieces of our proposal team. What we had elected to do by design was to be very minimalistic in establishing the team. We thought it was presumptuous at this point without knowing more about the vision and having some of those visioning sessions and so forth. Where it made sense, like in the case of OJB or HKS, specific to the stadiums, we did that. But we really see that as a collaborative effort. I think there will be instances where a team member makes a lot of sense on the master development as a whole, and there will be other times when best-of-class will be project by project-specific. And that can only be determined once we have a greater view of the vision and more definition as it relates to phasing as well. We were asked about how we handle our prioritizations, and I'll give you a little bit of the more nitty-gritty answer, but from the 30,000-foot level, this slide is, this slide's interesting. The planning is way out of scale. It would probably be four to five times that wide if we had a broader landscape perspective. I said this in the interview last week, but to quote Abe Lincoln, "Give me six days to get down a tree, and I'll spend the first four sharpening the ax." And that is very, very true in our business. And there was discussion about pitfalls for projects and so forth earlier, and there's no question, it's critical on the planning side, establishing what we want to build, where we want to build it, what the phasing is, what the massing of the various elements are. All of that will play into our subconsultant selections, our GC selections, how we go about getting financing. It's the driver to all things downstream of that. So being meticulous and thoughtful and collaborative in that regard makes the project far more seamless. Really, from design, implementation, and delivery, that starts to get more site for site. I mean, there's exceptions, of course, like central plant. Do you do a central plant for the whole thing? Do you do a central plant for the public elements? And have standalone for the private sector type of stuff? It's to be determined. We don't know that right now. We'd have to talk about it. But that's the 30,000-foot vision. I think it's really critical for all the reasons I said. When you get to the project level, thousand-foot level, we'll call it, don't expect you to read this, it would be boring even if you could, but this is a portion of a schedule from a real project that we have done recently. And this isn't our only means by any means, but this is our master means of controlling and monitoring the schedule. And what we'll do is a critical path schedule, and then among those critical path, critical path, of course, is the least number of activities and the fastest a project can get done. Non-critical activities, if not handled properly, can affect your critical path. That's obviously what we're trying to avoid, and those challenges vary depending on the stage of the project we're at. So we'll create this, obviously, this isn't real user-friendly. So when we're sitting down in a weekly design meeting, which we'll do, and weekly construction meetings thereafter, and there's a ton of overlap, especially between the constituents, and that includes consultants as well, when we do that, this would not be the tool to accomplish that. This is a management tool. So at the field level, really, what we'll do is we'll take extracts from this, depending on the phase that we're at, and we'll create key action items, and we'll do that collaboratively. A lot of times, the GC, the architect, others have things that are pressing on their mind. We'll commonly ask them what keeps you up at night to make sure we've got, we understand how many balls are in the air. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Joel.
Thank you, Jeff, and thank you all for the time today. Joel Behrens, been with Trammell Crow for the past 16 years. These guys failed to mention their tenure because they're older than me, but they've been there much longer, and it looks like it, too. Anyway, you know, so one of the questions asked of us is, what component of the conceptual planning guidebook do you consider to be the most important? It's hard to pick, but if you ask me, so I'll pick. I think it's not to lose your identity. I think hand-in-hand with that, though, is community engagement. You can't get the one without the other. And, you know, beyond that, you know, embracing the river is incredible opportunity. I think an overall goal of creating an 18-hour area is critical. How do you do that? Creating great restaurant scene, creating great entertainment uses, having public spaces that folks can enjoy, all that done in a way that is truly to Waco's identity, I think, is key. And another question that's asked of us is, how do we engage with public? It's what we do. It's what I do every day. You know, it's really what makes a project great. I don't live in Waco. I grew up in a small town, different than Waco, but I mean, I wouldn't want Dallas where I grew up, and I wouldn't want it here. I think you got to listen to what people want in their community. I think our success rate speaks to that. In the past 10 years, you know, our office, you know, we have 20 offices, but our office has worked on 25 entitlement projects and have not lost. I mean, not to say we haven't thought to pursue something and decided not to after we listened, but once we listen and we look at the overall economics and what we think works there and what the community wants, we make a decision to move forward or not. And when we do that, we win and have good outcomes, and we've been doing that for 75 years. One of the other questions that's been asked of us is financing strategy. I also think it's a bit too early to lay that out specifically, so I just simply want to give an example of a complex strategy that we employ. On the right are some of the strategies or tools that are available or mentioned during the process to us. We're going to use some of those. We might use some others. This is a complex project that we competed with in Dallas against all of our peers and were selected. It's a site owned by Dallas-area Rapid Transit, DART, transit organization. They've owned it for 35-ish years, had a competition, years in the making. We were selected to redevelop the site, 700 surface parking spots. They said, hey, pay us market for the land, assuming we build the garage, and pay for the garage, and then ultimately, they, I mean, we knew this going in, but they said, pay market. And ultimately, they said, hey, we'll give you $10 million for the garage, even though it costs 20. So go figure the rest out. And that's what we do. We figure stuff out. What did that mean? We went to the city, and we talked to them about a TIF district, you know, not creating one, it was there, but utilizing that as a tool. We also went to the North Texas Council of Governments, and we said, hey, we have this project. It's, while it's not a highway project, it's mobility, it's transit-oriented, it actually keeps people off highway systems. How can we use federal money to help build a garage for transit? And that was successful in getting $20 million from them. We still had a small gap at the end of the day, and ultimately, after years of work, we said, we'll just split it 50/50 to get the deal over the finish line. And so we can get creative. It is what we do every day, whether that's with private dollars or private, or public dollars or private dollars, it's what we do. And so here's another example. I'm super proud of this one. It's in Carrollton, town of over 100,000 people, first-tier suburb in Dallas, some similarities to Waco, but, you know, quite different. But yet, they have a beautiful downtown that needed some help. Carrollton had been looked over by many national restaurants because it was dry for a long time. In the early 2000s, they reversed that and really wanted to create a vibrant entertainment district, dining district. And they had some contaminated land, some lumberyard land that they had tied up and ultimately purchased that needed to be cleaned up. They issued an RFQ. We ended up getting married for 14 years. I wouldn't say we got divorced, we just ran out of land. We redeveloped, we redeveloped everything in downtown Carrollton that was available to us across four phases. They invested approximately $30 million that we probably turned into somewhere between $200 and $250 million over that time period. I think what they'd be most proud of is, you know, they have 1,500 new residents in downtown Carrollton. They have a brand-new square, which isn't shown on this, but is just off the picture there. But they have over 12 restaurants. It truly has become a meeting place for downtown Carrollton. And while absent from a major sports arena, it is home for Carrollton, is a place that people come at nights, on the weekends, they have music festivals, farmers' markets. It's an amazing place. That really would have been hard to imagine when we started working on this 14 years ago. It's an area that had 80-cent rents, and, you know, now we have rents ranging from, let's say, a buck eighty to 240. And so it's changed dramatically, and it spurred more development beyond just what we did. There's new single-family development occurring nearby as well. So placemaking, you know, I think this is what we do. It's a term that's thrown around a lot. I just want to mention it. I couldn't agree more with the comment made earlier about setting a vision and sticking to it. It is what we did in Carrollton. It's what we, I will profile on a couple projects. I think when you set a vision, you determine how do you then build around it? How do you place-make? How do you create that 18-hour city? You know, and I think part of that is what we bring to the table with experience, what works, what doesn't work, but we don't know it all. We'll engage consultants, and, you know, we've done that for 75 years and had great success doing it across public and private projects of all various product types. And we would employ a similar, you know, strategy here, but, you know, the difference being, we do it with you all as well. And so just real quick, want to profile a couple of what we call, you know, where we're placemaking. This is a really cool opportunity that we've been working on for a couple of years, still in the works, but one where I'm proud of because it reminds me a lot of where I'm from, but then also, you know, it's a family that's owned land 100 years. My family's owned land 100 years. It's hard to let go of something, you know, and so we competed with a lot of folks to get this, and we wanted it to be more than just a single-family subdivision and multifamily and maybe a small amount of retail. So in that top-right image there, that yogurt in the middle gets sold. I can't quote how much, but it's a lot of yogurt. And, you know, it's like, and it was an active farm, and now it's not because Dallas grew up, Plano grew up, it doesn't work anymore there, and so it's moved east Texas. But how we create a vision around it, and really, it's coming up with a plan that really leans into the agricultural nature of this development. Have I done one like this before? No, I've not. I've not done any of the ones that I've showed you until I did them, and I would think the same with Waco. You know, we are creative people, you know, and what we do is we go see places, we experience things, we hire people that have done it, and then we build around it. And then this is what we've done in Plano, and it's what we would do in Waco. This is another project that's about three miles from our office. This is a project we broke ground on a month ago. I've been working on it for the last six years. Michael Dell's family office acquired approximately 12 acres of land that's highlighted in blue on that screen in 2018. We helped them underwrite it, they closed it. They ultimately asked us to buy into the joint venture with them. And while there isn't really so much a public financial assistance in this, there's a huge public give-back in the sense of, this is a great neighborhood, one that is thriving, but yet could be a lot more than it was. It's a main street that's retail-driven, retail-first, highly walkable, immediately adjacent to Highland Park. Central Expressway there is on the east, Dallas is on the north and south. And so acquired all this land. We had plans that were less grandiose than what's on the screen, but what's on the screen is what we always believed and wanted to do, but sometimes you can't make that happen if you don't have all the parts and pieces. Once we got the yellow site in that area, we had what we needed, and we more or less tore up two years where the design started over. And we designed what's on the screen, which is a five-star hotel, a bunch of condos, a bunch of apartments, 100,000 square feet of retail and office. We're not all saying this is what we're going to bring to Waco, and I think one of the things we want you to take away is, we build what's right for the neighborhood, and that varies based off of the opportunity in the neighborhood that we're developing in. What we did here is we rebranded the neighborhood. They called it a district when we bought it. It's not a district. It's Knox Street. It always has been and always will be. We worked with City Dallas to redesign Knox. We worked with City Dallas to improve the rightsways of two different streets that were one-way to make them two-way. We increased pedestrian amenities. We put a park in. We did that before we even engaged with the community because we knew it was right, and we showed the community that. Everybody was all in because it was that, the Katy Trail is the hike-and-bike trail right there on the park. And so really doing what's right for the real estate first and foremost, when you engage the community with that mindset, it's pretty easy, and that's really what we saw occur here. And these are just some images of the project itself that we're building, but also some of the current images from the neighborhood itself and some of our holdings in the neighborhood. And so this is one I'm really proud of. I sit on a board of a nonprofit in Dallas that is the old McKinney Avenue. Trolley runs on McKinney and other streets in Dallas, and sat on that board, was actually working on the development of site across the street. That site is where this building is shown there in the upper left. When I was sitting on the board, they said, hey, we want to expand our trolley fleet, and they didn't have a place to put it, and so I'm sitting there hearing all this. You're like, well, how do I, this is crazy, they don't have any money. How are they going to do this? And they don't know I'm working on this site across the street. The point is, is it was one where it says above and beyond, but it's really what's doing what's right. It was seeing a need and reacting and figuring out how private developer can work with a nonprofit entity to do what's right and make it a win-win for everybody, and that's really what we did. So we built them a barn, as shown in that picture up there on the upper left, and we helped fund the addition of a seventh trolley car, and we also gave them office space in the building itself, where all they have to pay is rent, or I'm sorry, operating expenses in perpetuity. Real quick, because I need to take a sip of water. Kevin's going to hit on this, and I'll be right back.
Yeah, as Joel quickly touched on, you know, all the successful developments where we've implemented different development strategies for what is right in the community. In approaching how we think about the Waco development, we would obviously look back into our archives and the developments we've done in Dallas, but also our partners across the nation and what they've done, to see what went really well and what could have been improved on. But we go beyond what Trammell Crow has done, and we would think to the world of, you know, private developers beyond us. One that kept coming to my mind as we were huddling, coming up with what, you know, the vision for Waco really could be, or what might work really well here, is the Durham Bowls ballpark and the surrounding American Tobacco campus. 10 years ago, I lived in Durham, and this is where you'd go to hang out in downtown. Outside of that, there really wasn't much to be desired. It was cool, but it wasn't always safe after dark, and it wasn't where you'd go choose to hang out. This development and the investment that the city made, I think, one, captured the character of the American Tobacco, the history of the area, and it celebrated it. But in investing in the ballpark and the Durham Bowls and the surrounding area, 10 years later, there are private developers fighting for land to be near this, and I think it's just an awesome kind of representation of what we believe this could become in Waco. And now, I know my friends that are still in Durham, they're hanging out here, and they're hanging out all around downtown because it's just truly revitalized kind of the entire wider area. So love to think about this as a precedent, but we'll also go visit other minor-league ballparks and performing arts centers and see what they've done well and what they haven't, to see what we can bring back and layer in a Waco identity to really make sure that we're getting the best of everything that's out there.
I got three minutes, and I won't use it. So ultimately, I just want to thank you all. I hope, I hope it was informative. I hope you feel our energy. We really do want the business. We don't just pursue things to pursue things. We're pretty thoughtful about what we chase, and not to say others here aren't. It's clear that they are. But, you know, we spend a lot of time, as have others, and I think our team wants it, and I think we're really well-qualified. We bring a good balance of both working on the private side and the public side, knowing, you know, how to disbalance those dollars in a project, and yet still believing that you can create something and that you can stick to your vision and achieve what both works for the city and works for the private sector as well. And so I made fun of their age. I used to be the young person. I'm not anymore. But the point of that is, you know, we've been in business 75 years. We're not going anywhere. We're an evergreen company that we take pride in bringing up our talent behind us, and I think it's one that, you know, there's a track record. It's why I picked to work for this company and came to work for them 16 years ago. We bring it every day. We're not going anywhere, and we have a strong bench behind us in Dallas and around the country. So with that, appreciate all y'all's time today and open up to any questions you have. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. Holmes here. The one that, the Carrollton one seems to be sort of similar to what we're talking about for Waco. Do you have some, could you provide some more information? Not now, but could I get some more information on that one through Bradley? How much of that was public? How much was private? How much was city-owned? How much, trying to draw the similarities between them.
If you let me, I'll talk for two, and then we can follow up with whatever. But I mean, there was an RFQ back in 2007, 2008 timeframe, and at that time, they controlled what was an old lumberyard that was contaminated. The plan originally was to build 310 units and 125 public parking spaces. Their contribution was going to be the land and the garage. The land was actually quite inexpensive because it wasn't a great area at the time, but the garage was expensive. Ultimately, the great financial crisis happened, take a big timeout. We believed in Carrollton. Carrollton believed in Carrollton. The capital markets did not believe in Carrollton. Thankfully, coming out of the great financial crisis, we saw a massive reduction in construction costs, and we were actually able to free up $3 million of the proceeds they had set aside for the project. So instead of putting $13 million in for infrastructure and the public parking garage, we only needed 10. And so we went to Carrollton, and we said, hey, good news, bad news. Good news is we have saved $3 million. Bad news is no lender, no equity group wants to do this because it's 2009 and '10. And ultimately, what we came up with was a structure where Carrollton and our company put in all the money to build that first phase, which is 179 units, and we actually ended up splitting the profits with them either 50/50 or 60/40, one of those two. Deal merge is what we call it. I don't remember for sure, but ultimately, that was the first phase, and we went to them and we said, hey, And we went to them and we said, hey, do you want to do the next phase with us? And they said, you know what? It's not what we do and you guys go do it without us. And that's what we did. That was it. That was really kind of their vision and that was supposed to help spur downtown. At the same time, we were having so much success renting all this stuff out. I worked a couple of years to tie up over a dozen parcels of land from six or seven different property owners. And I went to Carrollton and said, how about we put the band back together and do it again? And we met about it for a while and ultimately worked out terms on that. That went really well. So then we went and tied up a few more acres on the south side of downtown and they hadn't even have their mindset on doing something down there. We had a road that didn't have curbs, no infrastructure, took that to them and they said, gosh, this is great. Let's do another one. All of that, it just kept snowballing, but you go from massive investment in the first phase to a little bit in, in the next one where I tied all those sites up to pretty much the only, um, public dollars that went into the last phase was improving that under improved street that had no utilities, no curbs, no nothing. But that, that all happened, uh, it seems like really fast, but it took a long time, dozen years or so, but.
Yeah, I like your comparatives there. Durham is one that we've kind of talked about privately too, the, the, the ball field there and similar kind of, uh, infrastructure around, older infrastructure. Um, so yeah, you guys have a, a great name in the, in the market, obviously. I mean, investment banking too, distressed, but, uh, yeah, Trammell and CBRE certainly good names to be associated with. Um, great presentation. I'll answer any other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I was, uh, looking in the portfolio that was sent up and I, I see you all mentioned uh, your position and intentionality in the supplier diversity program. Um, and I, I appreciate that it was broken out from what CBRE has done on their side, but then what you all do. I'm curious that, cause I know, um, um, the interpretation of, of diversity and equity words are kind of daunting right now for a lot of people. Um, do you have an idea of like, if should you be chosen for this project of underrepresented groups that you would, that, that, that you know of that speaks specifically to what we want to do here? Or is that just a local? Is that at a point where you'd do a deep dive and see what, what's available and what's around?
We would do that, yes. And it's, it's how we approach all, you know, all of our projects, whether we were doing work on DFW Airport, whether we're doing that public-private partnership with the city of Dallas, all of which require, um, rightfully so, um, a, a lot of participation. And so CBRE has a group that specializes in helping us identify that, not just for Trammell Crowe, but for CBRE, which is a huge company. So to us, you know, it's a definite advantage, um, but then obviously working with great contractors too, that I think have great expertise in, in identifying that as well.
And so you all are responding to what the city's set for their, um, MBEs.
Well, we have internal ones, but then, you know, the, it, we have internal ones that we report on, but then oftentimes, you know, um, a, a normal project, we would have, that would go on in the background, you wouldn't know, but then, you know, with the public pro, project, it's, it looks a bit different.
Awesome. Thank you.
On the public projects, we will report on those. On all of our projects, whether they're public or not, we'll monitor that.
Thank you. We appreciate you all coming.
Um, earlier in the presentation, there was, uh, a Gantt chart that was shown and, and it was referenced that, you know, we probably didn't want to look at that for any amount of time, but, uh, you did not know that Gantt charts are actually, uh, Councilmember Holmes' love language.
It's jam.
He would have actually really enjoyed spending some time on that, uh, that slide.
Would you like to back up 30 pages?
Yes. Give us two more hours and we'll run through all the line items.
That was very user friendly, actually.
Yeah, very, it's user dependent, I'll say. Um, I, uh, in line with, uh, sort of my general consensus of, of questions that I have, um, you got, I, I agree with Councilmember Holmes that the, the Carrollton project seems to be one that is most similar. It seems, um, obviously it was at a very different time and, and seemingly a smaller scale to the extent of, uh, the, the finances involved. Um, I don't want to take anything away from the city of Carrollton and say that they're, you know, not worthy of, uh, this much, uh, time and effort to, 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 to speak of the scale there. But, um, something that, uh, you mentioned, Joel, is that it?
Yeah.
Was, in going through the things that you prioritized, um, was, uh, being true to the identity of the city. Can you speak to, one, um, what you believe before and after, and if, if it's the same, um, Carrollton's identity is and, and/or was, uh, before and after the redevelopment there? And then also what you believe Waco's identity to be?
Yeah.
And all, all four of you can answer that question. It's a, it's a heavy one, but, um.
Yeah, so, um, on Carrollton, it was, to me, um, the first time I, I drove Carrollton, I mean Dallas and North Texas and general has a reputation as, uh, everything's new. Some might say it's a concrete jungle, like it's just new, new, new everywhere. And, and Carrollton wasn't that, that sad. They had I-35 like right over the top of their historic downtown. They had a brand new transit line, the green line that was opening up by Dart. Um, so they're kind of in this cavern, but yeah, they have this quaint square. They had, you know, storefronts of buildings that were a hundred years old that, and it had a gazebo in the center of a square. And so it was, and yes, lots of, um, subdivisions and whatnot that had grew around that over a hundred and I think they were formed in the late 1870s, but over a, a long period of time. But it was, how do we maintain the feeling of that historic area by, um, leaning in on the architecture, by creating, um, a streetscape and, and enhancing public spaces in a way, um, that I think really just, um, embraced that feeling. And we didn't try to make it new, but we also didn't try to, to fake it either. It's like making what's there better and then adding on to it. Um, but yeah, doing it in a way that's complementary to each other. And I think that, um, if we wouldn't have been successful in doing that, we wouldn't have seen, you know, both the restaurants. We had success opening, but other ones like that brewery come in. That was one that we were thrilled with, but you know, it was really the development around it that allowed that to happen. And then Carrollton leaning in to help make that happen and as well as a number of other, um, restaurants as well. Um, and so to me it was like, I just, how do you maintain that historic downtown feeling of, of this cool town that's existed on rail largely? It's how it was formed, um, was, is really just trying to be additive and honoring kind of the history of, of that area.
And what steps, uh, maybe not what steps, but what, um, similarities to that, uh, that process of, of how do you maintain what is there? Um, do you see, um, presenting themselves and opportunities like that, presenting themselves in Waco, um, specific to the, the care that you took, uh, for that process in Carrollton?
I think it's like, it's, I don't know, or simplify, but like listening. I mean, I don't live in Carrollton. I'm not from Carrollton. I don't live in Waco and, you know, and ultimately I, I'd say the people in Carrollton love what we did. Um, how, and, and I would say what we proposed, um, was, uh, a result of years of listening, of work sessions of, you know, and, and work done before us. There's a lot of great work that's been done by staff and your community in preparation for today. So how do we piggyback off of that work? Um, but then we're going to come up with ideas and we're going to challenge each other. So, you know, you're, I, I joked earlier, we're getting, we're getting married, so make sure you pick wisely, right? But you're like, we gotta work well together because there's going to be ups and downs and, uh, but then the day you want to find somebody that's collaborative, that doesn't force their vision on you, um, but yeah, listens and, and, but then informs you of, you know, what, what, what's the hurdle? How do we overcome that, you know? And then that to me is, uh, because there's a lot of different ways to do that. And I think ultimately that, that's how we got there with them. And I think it's a similar form, um, that we would get there with you guys. And I think ultimately it's bringing that collaborative nature with a lot of creativity to the table.
Great, thank you.
You bet. Any other questions or comments? Thank you guys so much for being here. We really appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
Tom.
Mayor, does the council need a break or y'all want to keep rolling?
I feel good.
At least for a moment.
I'll have a half cut.
All right.
Make that two.
I think I'm going to go ahead and invite the next team up if that's okay.
Counsel is elected to keep going if we can.
Okay.
Waco Heritage Crossing is our next team. Um, Judge Kincaid will be, uh, the key speaker and I'll introduce him in just a moment. We're going to give them a few minutes to set up.
That's scary.
It was my pleasure to turn it over to Judge Kincaid and his team, uh, joint venture called Waco Heritage Crossing.
Thank you, Tom. It's been, by the way, I want to thank, it's been a pleasure working with Tom. He's a fine young man and I hope he's coming to work for the federal court system after this. I wanted you to think about three things. Relationships, local connections, and excellence. Brad and I put this team together based on relationships, not based on contracts. I'm going to give you an example. Forty-five years ago, when I'm trying murders, rapes and robberies, I had an 18-year-old high school kid intern with me in the middle of that to do anything we ask him to do. He went on to law school. He went on to, uh, practice law and then on into a big company. Guess what? It's Greg Courtwright, president of Lincoln Property. I can't say that it always due to me, but I, I like to take a little credit. David Walls, president of Austin. He and I have been friends over 25 years. We serve on Baylor Scott and White board together and we see the world very similarly and we've, we've pitched together before. Jonathan Pearlman and I came to Baylor with very similar dreams. He was going to be a walk-on baseball player. He became an All-American, played in two World Series and was a first round draft pick for the Chicago Cubs. My dream was a little different. I set two records in basketball. One, I was the only cheerleader that never played a high school ball that walked on at Baylor. And secondly, I still have the record for the most highest free throw percentage in an actual game, two for two. So David and, and, I mean, Jonathan and I share a lot of things together. The reason I brought that up, not to make it just a joke, our teams have worked together, not based on contract, based on handshakes and relationships. Yes, they make contracts after that, but Lincoln works with Austin, Austin with Lake Flato, Lake Flato with Lincoln, OJB with all of them. Those are the kind of relationships you better have when you're working in these kind of 10-year projects. Local. Brad lives here. I have invested everything I have here in this town. I don't invest in, in anything but real estate in Waco, Texas. We built three of the finest projects here and I'm proud of all three of them, particularly the one in East Waco where we do have part of the solution. We have workforce housing. We've had the same persons in each of those apartments. One's going to be a school, is a school teacher saving for a home and the other one is a teacher's aide saving for a car. That's what we do to lift people out and into a higher level of, of income. So why is local even matter? Let me tell you, Lincoln's based in Dallas, Austin in Dallas, Tradition in Dallas, Lake Flato, Austin in San Antonio. So why does that matter? Where's going to be challenges and opportunities that are going to occur on this? You know, that's some of those buzzwords that people like to use. Is it going to be somebody that's here that you see when we're walking down the street? Or is it somebody that comes in here, builds something and, and they're gone? That's up to y'all. Team excellence. Lincoln, one of the finest operators, developers in the world and one of the largest and run by that 18-year-old kid who's still skinny, but has gray hair, but still honest, trustworthy and dependable. Tradition, finest, some of the one, most wonderful senior living project. If you go to Fort Worth, um, go look at their, at their latest, uh, at their latest project. Lake Flato, the Pearl. You all wanted to hear about the Pearl? Here is the architect for the Pearl, right down there, right there. And did the project, and by the way, was named the most outstanding architect in the United States this year. I didn't get that for judges, but maybe next year. That man right there. And look at McKinney and what he did for the city there and how that worked out. OJB, I like to think about them. I drive under their park almost every day in Dallas. Don't we want something like that here? Yes, we do. We want a big vision. And Sherwood, who we brought in as engineers, let me tell you something. In 2012, when there was a terrible sandy hurricane in New York City and the water filled up all of the subways, who'd they bring in to resolve those kind of problems? Sherwood. Sherwood, if there's water, I just save this, water, water, water. This is a water project. We're on the water. It's not easy. I built on the water. I know what kind of things can occur. It's, it's a challenge and we look forward to that challenge. Austin, I, let me just say this about Austin. Let's go out, out here, look out the window and look at Foster and McLean. I kind of rest my case after that. And I want to introduce Greg. He's not 15 anymore. Thank y'all very much.
Thanks for having us here today. Uh, been to, you know, my fair share of events like this before and, uh, I've never had the pleasure of thanking somebody for calling me skinny with great hair. So it's a great way to start the meeting. I'll take it. Thanks, Judge. Um, I do want to pause for just a minute, talk for, you know, briefly about what Judge mentioned, which was when I was 18 years old, I, I, I had an honor from the Richardson Schools District to, uh, work in something called the Management Internship Program, which is something they put on to try to give kids my age at that time, uh, introduction and, uh, trying to make plans for the vision for their own future and what that might be like. And I spent a semester working in Judge Kincaid's court, who now give him a little compliment back, I think was the youngest, uh, criminal district court judge in the state of Texas at the time. So it was a great experience, but I never dreamed that 40 years later I'd be standing in front of the Waco City Council, uh, talking about a project together with him and the city that he loves. And I got to tell you, if you spend a semester in Judge Kincaid's courtroom, you learn very quickly, uh, his love for Baylor and his love for the city of Waco. So, uh, when we talked about getting together, there was no, no hesitation in any of our minds that this was the right group to assemble for this project. It's really an honor to be here and it's an honor to be working with Judge Kincaid. Um, the thing I'd like to do in my, uh, short time here and talking to you today is really to talk about, um, what I think is the most important things in the choice that you have between the people who are coming in front of you today, and they're all great people. Lincoln is, as I mentioned the other day in our presentation, it's a 60-year-old company. Uh, ironically enough, it was formed on a handshake between two legends of the industry, Mac Pogue and Trammell Crowe. Uh, and the handshake really had to do with what kind of business are we going to have? And the kind of business we were going to have was, uh, And the kind of business we were gonna have was to just find good people, talented people, people who are hardworking, and support them to do what they do well and otherwise try to stay out of their way. And that's the way the company's been grown over the years, Lincoln Property Company. It's gone from that handshake between two gentlemen sixty years ago to one of the largest privately-held companies in the country that does all services in real estate and a premier developer of all kinds of projects in all major cities. But it was founded on that ideal of just finding good people, supporting them, and getting out of their way. And what comes along with that is you can't really progress in that way unless you know how to be good partners with somebody. And that's inside the company and that's outside the company. It's ingrained in us from the day we all started at Lincoln Property Company. For me, that was not long after I was an intern for Judge Kincaid. I've been with Lincoln for almost forty years, believe it or not. It started there as a runner when I was going to school at SMU. I worked as a lawyer with Lincoln as my client after I got out of SMU. And then I joined Lincoln as a chief operating officer, and I've worked there for the next twenty-seven years and became president recently. So I know what the company's about, have great pride in it, and I think the important distinction that we bring to you here today is that that's the kind of company we are. We're gonna work in partnership. When we look through the things that we're presenting you, and you'll hear a whole lot more about that today from some very qualified people, there's no doubt, I don't mind saying it, I don't think it's arrogant, I mean, we're as qualified or more qualified than anybody in the country to do this project, no matter how you look at it. We've done master plans, we've done mixed use, we've done all these product types, we've done public financing, we've worked with cities, we've entered development agreements with cities. And the thing that we've always brought away from all of that is a good experience, not only a good project, something that looks good, that everybody's proud of, that fulfills a vision when all is said and done, but also that everybody feels good about it as human beings afterwards, that the team worked well together, that all the problems that came up, because they always do, actually got solved in creative, constructive ways. That's the company that Lincoln is. That's the team we've assembled today for this project. So I think the important thing is, when you reflect on the right choice for this project, who do you think's most likely to work with you to fulfill your vision? We've got one of the most rabid Waco and Baylor believers that you'll ever encounter here, somebody who's gonna be here before we got here, and he'll be here after we leave with the project done. It means everything to Judge Kincaid and this team that we do the right thing here. Who's gonna fulfill the vision that you're looking to fulfill? How are we gonna come up with that vision? Are we gonna do it together? Are we gonna do it as partners? Are we gonna do it the same way Lincoln's been doing those kinds of things for sixty years? And with that, I think I'd like to introduce somebody who I've worked with for thirty years, I think, or thereabouts, Stephen Chapman. And if you count his dad, he's been with Lincoln for sixty years. So he's one of our cherished people, the most experienced guy at Lincoln in projects like this, and he'll tell you a lot about what we've done.
Thanks. I'll try to be a little bit more brief so we can get to the important fun stuff, because we have a lot of presentation from David Lake, and that'll be exciting and enjoyable for folks. And I'm a little bit more boring and kinda mundane. So just a little bit more about Lincoln, fifty-eight years in business, six billion of capitalized projects since 2016, over forty billion dollars of development since we've been in business. And these are just some large projects we've done, just for kind of you guys to look at size and scale the types of projects. We picked a handful of projects to talk about because they relate to this kind of city building and how it has changed over the last twenty years. And so I'm gonna go through these kind of three examples, starting with something twenty-five years ago to something we're currently working on today. And so we're gonna start, and we'll talk about the keys to success financing first, I apologize. Talk about holistic project, minimize risk, overall public benefit, utilize multiple public and private financing sources, and align the vision. Again, the vision is critical. So we'll talk about the Hill Country Gallery and Shops, the gallery of B Cave, Texas. So we started on this project, oh, early in my career, about twenty-five years ago. You can see the before. It was just a bunch of vacant land out there. B Cave had a handful of problems. Highway seventy-one there between BK Road and six-twenty had significant traffic issues. So we worked with the city to figure out how to finance that. So we built this project to help widen seventy-one, create an additional roadway, create additional infrastructure. This was what projects were back then. It's not as visionary as The Pearl. It's not as authentic. It's much more commercial. That's what we were doing thirty years ago. Then we moved forward, but we did do B Cave City Hall, we did do public space, but it was small. It wasn't to the scale that you're gonna wanna have here in Waco. So then we move forward and we meet Patty Sinclair, who's here with us today, and we start working on Playa Vista. This is in Los Angeles. This is the old Howard Hughes site. It's over a thousand acres, six hundred acres given back to the state of California for wetlands and other forty acres of parks. And then we created a vision here of live, work, play, really started to hone in public space. How does it interact with the private space? How do we create a great place to live, a great place to be? Playa has really exceeded everyone's expectations from that perspective, and Patty is just a mastermind of how to work these public and private funds together. She financed the Staples Center by way of example, so as an attorney. So she can help us with this process of how we do this, how we make it work. And so, you know, and then you've got the great Town Center in Playa. It was over four billion in capitalization, over two-hundred million in public financing, and we used primary Melrose, which is essentially a TIF, affordable housing bonds and state improvement program. Point of the Mountain, that's where we are today. That's the latest project. So this is in Draper, Utah. This was an old prison site. It's over six hundred acres, the total development. We are working on the first phase, which is sixty-six acres. We've already obtained a hundred and sixty-five million dollars in public financing because basically there's no infrastructure here. It's a greatly, a really great located site. It'll be a really great project, and look at the amount of green space here. I don't think this thing has a pointer, but if you look, you can see the river to range, you see a public park. These connections between public and private are critical to create these visions and great spaces that I'm gonna let David talk a little bit more about here in the next part of this. David, I'll turn it over to you.
What a great opportunity. And thank you all for having the vision and the aspiration to take a project on like this, to make a new city heart here in Waco on the banks of the mighty Brazos. Did I say it right? Okay, all right. He keeps telling, I'm coming from San Antonio, so I always wanna say it differently. So what an incredible opportunity for Waco ISD, the city, the county, to get together and provide this amazing opportunity. And I look at all these old postcards of Waco, and I think, what if, at the end of this project, you were so proud of this project and it had such impact on the state and beyond that everybody said, had you been to the heart of Waco, had you seen the new city on the Brazos? How incredible would that be? That's our goal, to build on Waco's history, your great tradition. Austin Avenue is spectacular. It's amazing to have it intact and have it inform how we grow and merge history with the future. At The Pearl, eighteen years ago, I was the lead master planner, the lead architect for the first three phases of the project. I have stayed with Oxbow and Silver Ventures. We share a great bit of collaboration on projects besides Pearl. But we started, as Bill Schoen told you before, with this vacant, empty, twenty-three-acre site, very far from downtown, two miles from downtown, a lot more challenges than your project. So I feel like if we can do Pearl, we as a team can do this new heart for the city of Waco. And how do we do that? OJB and Lake Flato and Lincoln and the entire team are dedicated to listening to you. This has to be an inclusive process. The best ideas often come from citizens, from users, from people in the community that shape how we move and create this vision. For The Pearl, I assembled people from all over the city, including restaurateurs, local retailers. We were very dedicated to making this local. Local makes authenticity. Local Waco businesses make authenticity. We communicate using models, sketches, the latest in 3D visualization, but the map on the right is really telling. That was the first master plan that said, what is the experience at Pearl? The orange indicates the highest level of pedestrian traffic, the blue indicates quiet zones for residential. And we started thinking about where do the restaurants and the retail interact with one another and make a really designated new district? And where do we put housing? And how do we engage the river? This before image on the upper left shows you what we started with. The image on the right is what we ended up with. We've planted over a thousand trees at The Pearl. It is a sustainable district. We used sustainable infrastructure, and now there's movies at the river. And if we can do this here, you've got the mighty Brazos. Unbelievable opportunity to make something significant. As Bill also mentioned earlier, we needed to make a significant place at Pearl. We are two miles from downtown, we are surrounded by empty neighborhoods. We determined, we brought together people, and I have a restaurateur friend, and he said, well, why don't we bring the Culinary Institute of America to Pearl? Why don't we start teaching people about the benefits of culinary arts, wealth, health, wellness, and then that leads to health and wealth? So The Pearl has become a transformative, inclusive, and dynamic destination for all. And we made, our goal was to say that we want Pearl to be accessible to everyone in San Antonio, everyone, and to be a sustainable district. We harvested all the rainwater, we irrigate native plants, we take stormwater and put it into bioswells and wetlands. It is a leading proponent of how to do a model new city with light impact on our natural resources and on the planet. I think that's really important moving forward, and it's become a great gathering place. And for McKinney, we started on that project, they came to us and said, we want a new city hall. We said, well, we think you need more. We think you need to make the city hall part of a stronger fabric that weaves together the district into your current downtown, just as we imagine weaving together the river with your city hall and your extension of Austin Avenue. And there's the building going up. It was very much inspired by North Texas warehousing, cotton production, and so it's brick, timber frame, very handsome building for the city of McKinney. So what an amazing opportunity. We always hesitate to talk about ideas that we haven't, you know, met with the community to talk about, but we got so excited about your project that we couldn't help ourselves. Between Lincoln and OJB and the entire team, we were just, okay, wow, this has gotta be something. And one of the great things, and you've heard it from all the teams, you've got to energize the Brazos. It has got to become the great riverfront central park of Waco. And you've already got these amazing bridges, you've already got the downtown, link them together into the heart. OJB has done this for Omaha on the Great Missouri River. This is before on the left and after master plan on the right. They are brilliant at bringing together the entire community and listening and finding consensus, building consensus on what should be included in the vision, what should be in the master plan. And now there's something for everyone in Omaha. I know we can do something even more memorable here in Waco. Similarly, Claude Warren Park, before on the left, after in the middle, just thinking about how transformative and visionary that was to claim a place that was awful and make it into something memorable. So one of our thoughts, and our big thought just quickly, was, well, what if we took University Parks Drive and instead of letting it just route all the way along the river, that we actually pulled it away from the river and actually created more space, more open space between University Parks Drive and the river, and brought it along and created these nice curves, so it was no longer this just thoroughfare that people crashed through, but instead it became a very meandering, amazing place that took advantage of the big, broad, open spaces and began to unite the city hall more directly to the park, to actually pull the park right in, tight to city hall, and be the natural extension of Austin Avenue to the river. Barron's Branch. We also saw that, is what if we actually thought of Barron's Branch as linking Dewey Park to the river and beyond to the neighborhoods, to the north, to the east, and the west? This plan has got to unite the fabric of the city. It's gotta bring the communities together, it needs to really engage all the citizens and really learn how to make a great, authentic place, particular to Waco. So the lower two images are really fun, because I've been to Fenway, and if you've been to Fenway, you know the whole experience of going to the ballgame, ain't exactly going to the ballgame, I'm sorry for the baseball players out here, but actually the fun part of going to Fenway is walking the walk through that neighborhood in the middle to an amazing venue. And what if this venue was on the river and did more? It was an iconic place, unique to Waco, a place people wanna go hang out. If you can make people hang out, you've made a success. So we've done this for the federal courthouse in San Antonio. That is an image before on the left of San Pedro Creek. On the right, what if we made Barron's Branch feel like that and have housing all along it and have passive hike and bike trails connecting to Dewey Park and beyond? That's a success story. We have a great tradition as city squares, as places to celebrate. That's what your city square should be like. It should go back to the spirit of how your entire community came downtown to invigorate not only themselves and have a family, memorable family moment, but also to just engage with one another and to have seasonal events. How fun is that? What a great tradition in Texas. Breathing life back into your historic square. And we have sought for many years to work with Lincoln, and I'm really excited that we finally have this opportunity to collaborate with someone of their quality, their caliber, and their commitment to listening and to being really aspirational. Every team member has to be aspirational, has to drink the Kool-Aid. We all gotta roll together to make a memorable place. That's what we learned at Pearl, that's what we've been steadfast in doing. Your city center should be dynamic by using all the tools in the toolbox to create a physical success and a sustainable place. So we've also done that at Main Plaza. Main Plaza is three hundred years old, it's the oldest plaza in San Antonio. And in the middle is the view from the Riverwalk at the bottom to Main Plaza, the heart of San Antonio, the city hall in Bear County. So by day, by night, the city has to have a thought about, and we work with the Conservation Society and with a nonprofit who actually manages the city hall and all the events. So the programming for these things are pivotal. How do you make these animated? How do we work and engage all the neighborhoods around the site and think about what are the things missing in downtown Waco and missing for these neighborhoods? And how we backfill those? Residents make a place. This team is dedicated and has done affordable, market-rate, workforce, subsidized, and senior housing. It is actually our strength. And we know that residents make a place. They provide security, they provide community. Community builds commerce. Commerce builds local establishments and businesses. So what if your downtown looks like this? What if the buildings, this is a hotel we did downtown San Antonio on the Riverwalk, fits into the historic fabric of the city? It's walkable. Here it is at day, here it is at night. All of our projects respond to culture, context, and climate, and all of them are resilient. I'm almost... Okay, I got it. Wait, three seconds. Okay, so this is Austin Central Library. That's what it was before. It became this, which is now, what if your city hall and your convention center were exuberant spaces like on the right, daylight, resilient, sustainable? It's the most energy-efficient building in Texas. And what if every porch, every roof looked out to the Brazos and to downtown? And what if, at the end of this project, we had a postcard that said, God, you're living with me here. That we are so proud of this journey that we're going on this long journey, and we are committed to this journey, and we want it to be, everyone say, had you been to Waco? Yeah, gotta go. Thank you.
Any questions for the group? Questions or comments?
I'll just make a quick comment. Judge Kincaid, you put a heck of a team together here and a lot of history and experience in similar-type projects, it looks like, and the Pearl and the Main Plaza in San Antonio, McKinney Project, Playa Vista, and the Riverfront in Omaha, which is my hometown up there. That place is beautiful, and it's an older part of the city, too. I like your ideas on drawing on the Waco story. I know that we're not to that stage of the deal yet, but optimizing the neighborhood is kind of what we're trying to do here. So I don't really have any questions, but great presentation. Thanks.
I'll jump in and just say, I appreciate the level of detail and the thought put into this and the creativity, you know, taking what is there now and looking to optimize it, even, you know, with the snaking of U-Parks potentially and looking for ways to connect different parts of our city. I don't know if you edited this slideshow after I asked the gentleman from Oxbow about connectivity, but obviously that is something that is important to me, so I appreciate the thoughtfulness that went into that. And I mean, I don't really have to ask why Waco at this point. It was made pretty evident throughout the presentation, so I'll just leave that at my comments. And like House Member Holmes said, it seems as if the experience is there. You guys have done several projects that are similar to this, even if not in their totality individually, definitely in the aggregate when you look at the portfolio here. So again, really appreciate your thoughtfulness and the creativity and the level of detail provided here.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh man, we wanted to get the question about, you know, how do we keep it from, you know, people not being treated fairly? And the whole idea is that you treat people fairly by providing housing for everyone. So we don't get into this question. That's the challenge. Thank you.
Thank you.
We've been rounding around about this.
I'm sure you have, but it's where you need to go around and around.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for your indulgence on the time a little.
Thank you all for entertaining us through these presentations. We have dinner available if you're ready for a break now. We can do that.
Can we just do one more?
Yeah, well, you want to take a break? Why don't we do a five-minute break? Five-minute break, y'all come on, set up and... Yeah.
All right.